Welcome to the December 10th, 2020, Parma City School District Board of Education Meeting. I apologize for the slight delay. We were having technical difficulties. But at this time, would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance
to the United States of America and to your country the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That just does not hold up well under
It does not.
Thank you, everybody, though. We'll call Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Bratz.
Present.
Mrs. Carpus.
Present.
Mr. Kreis.
Present.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Nucio. At this time, I'd like to confirm that all board members and administrators are connected to this meeting. So if each person, as I call your name, would confirm that you can see, hear, or both when asked, please do so. Mr. Vaughn?
Both.
Mrs. Bratz?
Both.
Mrs. Carpus?
Both.
Mr. Kreis?
Both.
Dr. Smilak?
Both.
Mr. Nucio?
Both.
And I, John Schweitzer, are also both. Dr. Smilak, can you please confirm that this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
Yes, sir, it is.
Thank you very much. Uh, board members and administrators, if at any time during this meeting you cannot hear or see the other participants, please speak up immediately so that the technical difficulty can be addressed. Dr. Smilak, please monitor the livestreaming throughout the meeting, and if the livestreaming stops for any reason, please speak up immediately so that the technical difficulty can be addressed. This meeting will be conducted electronically in accordance with amended substitute House Bill 197 and House Bill 404, as more specifically detailed on the notice attached to the night's agenda. Okay, is that... You got that on there, Pam?
Mm-hmm. I showed it when you were reading it.
All right, thank you. All right, at this point, then, uh, I move to adopt Resolution 2020-12-529, suspending requirement for in-person meetings under board bylaws.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2020-12-529. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
2020-12-529 has been approved. At this time, we move to information to the board. Dr. Smilak, any information to the board?
Uh, yeah, I do have several things. Between last meeting and this meeting, we had, uh, two calamity days. Uh, last week, I just want to be clear that, um, the calamity days were called really specifically, uh, because, A, the, the timing of the storm, um, you know, really came in, uh, worse than, than we expected the, the morning of. But secondly, the widespread power outages throughout the community, uh, really precluded us from even offering, you know, online learning. We didn't think it was we didn't think it was equitable to provide, uh, virtual instruction when such a large percentage of our students were without power. So we do have a remote learning procedure in place. Uh, the key piece will be really the forecast, uh, at noon the day before any given school day. So for instance, if we can see, you know, by noon on Tuesday, that, you know, temperatures are going to drop to negative 10 degrees, uh, by Wednesday morning, we're going to call it a remote learning day by noon of that preceding day. Um, if we see a forecast that has, you know, just a really, I can't miss storm, uh, and I know the last storm ended up being that, but it hadn't looked like that the day before, uh, by, by 12 o'clock, we would again, you know, if that ominous forecast, uh, comes through, go ahead and call a remote learning day, in which case everybody would, you know, be at home and, and, and learning through, uh, Google Classroom. So I know there were some questions in the community about, you know, why we didn't have, uh, remote learning days, and really the answers are supposed to be to the, the power outages, and we are prepared to have remote learning days, uh, as we move ahead. Did, did the board have any questions about that?
No, I was pretty familiar with why we had to do it.
Uh, secondly, I, I wanted to make sure that we congratulated. We've had, uh, several procedures, really statewide awards, as well as one national recognition in our communications department. Uh, the Ohio School Public Relations Association, which, you know, represents all of the, uh, basically, you know, PR wings of school districts throughout the state, uh, recognized us and, and specifically Amy Popick from our communications department. Uh, they gave the best of the best award for our website, which is really, uh, a prestigious award. They gave a mark of distinction for our social media campaign, uh, and they gave a mark of distinction for the social media campaign specific, which was, uh, my PCSD story. So congratulations to the communications department and thank you to Amy, uh, for all of your work. On that same vein, the National Public, uh, or School Public Relations Association recognized Audrey Holtzman as one of the top 35 under 35 to watch. So, uh, obviously, we're sort of bearing Audrey's age here. She's obviously 35 or under, but recognized as one of the top 35 under 35 in the country, uh, is really impressive, and, and we're grateful that she's active in these organizations. It's a great, uh, networking opportunity, and, and she gets a lot of great ideas. But congratulations to Audrey for her recognition and Amy for those awards. Uh, great assets to our Parma City Schools. So, thank you. Uh, I'd also like to just, uh, uh, speak briefly to the calendar. Uh, Mrs. Barkowski's bringing that up now. Um, we did, uh, take a look at potentially, uh, looking at a, 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 a post-Labor Day start. We called that sort of the, the COVID or COVID-esque, uh, calendar, because this year, we actually started, you know, after Labor Day due to COVID. Um, however, when you look at that, there would be, you know, the abnormal breaks, just really four days around Easter, which would qualify as spring break. Uh, last day for teachers was going to be June 13th, and when, when we really looked and, and talked about it with our associations and, and our employee groups, uh, the traditional calendar was, you know, still a preference. So this is what we're presenting to the board. Um, this will be on our website. Anyone can comment, uh, for 30 days. We can't adopt this until it's been public for 30 days. So please, if you're watching in the community and you have a reaction to the calendar, which is, you know, again, pretty much a standard, you know, school year calendar, but please go ahead and email me, uh, with your comments, and 30 days from now, then that makes us eligible to adopt this. So just those few, uh, quick items, and, um, uh, we appreciate the ability to share our story tonight. Any questions for me?
Uh, no, none for you at all. Thank you very much.
I do, I do want to mention, thank you for, uh, bringing that up about, uh, Amy and the Saltzman. Uh, two quality people that are on our, our staff, on your staff. That's, that's fantastic. Great qualities. Are they on here to hear that? Great job, guys. Thank you.
Believe so, yes.
Thank you.
Well, you know, with Audrey, 35 and under 35, and since I've known her probably for close to a decade, I'm really feeling old right now. Just gotta say that.
There you go. All right, sorry about that.
No, we're good.
But we also have, uh, since there's no more questions for me, Mrs. Stropko's going to talk about the, uh, course guide. We have some, some excellent, uh, improvements, um, and, and I thought that she could take a little bit of time to talk about those, uh, as we're always looking to improve our course offerings for the coming school year. Mrs. Stropko?
Mrs. Barkowski, can you share your screen or?
Oh, sure. I'll be happy to.
Yeah, I'll just be easier.
Okay, let me
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Um, you need to make me host. I'm sorry, because I made you the host.
Okay, I just did.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
All right, so it's that time of the year. Thank you, Dr. Smilak, for giving me this time. I'll be very brief. Um, last year, we made a lot of updates to our registration guide. Um, so it's that time of the year where we start thinking about next, uh, school year, and, uh, I just wanted to highlight, um, some very exciting changes, um, that will take place for the 2021-22 school year. So our district goals, increase student achievement, obviously out of curriculum and instruction. Um, that's what we aim to do, uh, in creating opportunities for kids where they have experiences that put them on the mark, uh, that empower them and give them, uh, that college and career readiness and that edge, uh, when they are no longer a student in PCSD. So we, we had graduation requirement changes from ODE this school year, and, um, some of those changes, uh, are, are very, uh, simple. Uh, we still have our credit requirements of 20 credits. Um, one of the things that has changed is there are two end-of-course exams that our students will take, uh, for, uh, 2023 and beyond. So our kids that are graduating in 2023, um, they will take in 10th grade, an English and a math, uh, end-of-course exam. They have two times to pass that, that exam. They could take it as many times as they need to during the duration of their high school career, but some of our students, um, may opt for more career-focused activities, uh, enlisting in the military, or going college credit plus. So if they are unable to pass that end-of-the-course exam, um, we have that robust, uh, career and tech programming for our students in which, um, we provide, uh, the points necessary for that alternative graduation path. The last thing that's changed is there are, uh, nine graduation seals and three local graduation seals. And some are linked to how you score on, um, Ohio State tests. Others are linked to honors and AP courses that you take. And specifically, our local graduation seals have everything to do with community service, with, um, fine and performing arts courses, and also, um, being involved in extracurricular activities. So just some changes that have occurred. Um, you did vote on policy for this in, in June, so I just wanted to remind you of that. So our next slide is during the course of March, up until probably last month, I have been in collaboration with our high school guidance chairs um, and our deputy principals, uh, with curriculum and instruction. And anytime there's a big policy change and there's local decisions, our, our, our team, we really looked at what is the best way for our kids to, um, get those local seals, um, and how we can provide opportunities for kids to graduate, to get our kids organized, and to prepare kids for college and career readiness. Um, so through those discussions, we came up with two very good ideas, and they are two courses that we are adding to the registration guide. So our first course is, um, for all eighth graders. It's a semester course, and it's called the High School Readiness Course. And there is a quarter one component and a quarter two component. The quarter one component is transition. So during this time, our eighth graders will really work hard on Google Workspace applications. We'll teach them specific study skills, uh, and note-taking strategies to be successful in high school. There will be character and leadership development, in which peer mentors can come down, um, and be that role model for our eighth grade students. Uh, we will talk extensively about graduation requirements. Every one of our students now must have a graduation plan, and it will provide an opportunity for our eighth graders to understand the components of the seals. And then also with the study skills and the note-taking strategies, we hope will carry on to those end-of-the-course exams. We will provide opportunities to explore extracurricular activities and community service opportunities. You'll see in the yellow below, we have a program called Naviance, um, that our students currently use right now, where they are, um, goal-setting, uh, and researching various careers, uh, in post-secondary options. So we will make sure our kids understand that program. Our quarter two will really focus on technology. Uh, and so it gives our eighth graders an opportunity to continue to work on Google applications, uh, keyboarding skills, digital communication, um, safety, organization, um, different components of online research, um, that is so much needed right now uh, with 21st century learning, and Microsoft Word Office Task. Now, all of our eighth graders will have the opportunity to take the Microsoft Word three-point exam, and this exam allows our eighth graders, um, three points towards that 12-point career alternative path. So we're actually putting our kids ahead of the game, um, should they, um, go that route, um, after they try for that end-of-the-course exam two times. Um, so this is a mandatory course that all of our eighth grade students will be registered for starting next school year. And then our last change is a 10th grade course. Um, so it is highly recommended that all 10th graders take a semester of career and college readiness. So we are preparing in eighth grade our kids to be successful in high school, and now in 10th grade, we're preparing our kids for college readiness, career readiness, and that personal finance for right when I get out of high school and how I manage. Um, so our kids will explore college and scholarship options. They will write, um, college applications. They will learn how to request letters of recommendation, and we will continue that graduation planning and local seal check-in. This will provide our guidance counselors opportunities to come into this, this course instead of pulling out of our core instruction. Um, part two will be that research of careers and occupations. Um, we'll, we'll conduct job interview skills. Uh, we'll have career guest speakers come in, and this is a time in 10th grade where our, our kids can explore career and tech. They can explore career and tech and the college pathway together, and how they can earn, um, credits and have that career credential, um, when they leave Parma City School District. And lastly, the financial planning, financial literacy, and really having our kids look at what is my role, um, as a, you know, citizen in, in, in my community, and what is my role outside, um, in the bigger lens? And so our vision for this was to really provide opportunities for those soft skills that are so needed for our high school graduates, um, in eighth grade, and then one more time in 10th grade. Um, so we're really, really excited about this, um, so much that we thought we would present and open it up for any questions, comments, um, that you may have as the Board of Education.
Thank you, Tiffany. Uh, I really have no questions. Uh, and I know at the agenda meeting a couple of days ago, I said that I thought this was a nice move forward. Uh, things kids need to know, I, you know, uh, I'm, I'm behind the entire move, so congratulations.
Yeah, that's, uh, gonna reiterate what you just said about that. I think that's genius, the, uh, college and career readiness class. That's superb. Absolutely. Thank you. Great, great job.
I agree. I have so exciting. Go ahead, Cindy. Oh, okay, and it's just really exciting information. Um, it gives really need, and some families support some of this and help their students along, but there's a lot of families that aren't even aware of a lot of these kinds of skills and how to guide their, um, children through it. So, oh, man, I think these are wonderful things to make sure our kids have exposure to while they're in, uh, at a time when they can still make a difference, you know, in their high school career path and then beyond.
And it, it really was a collaborative effort. Like I said, this was a decision that came about through conversation with our guidance, um, chairs and our deputy principals, and, and that's so important because they're living day-to-day with our kids, and, and they see where those gaps are. So we are, um, very lucky that we have that collaboration and those systems in place. Um, just the, two more changes, um, that I wanted to share that are exciting changes as well, is world language. Um, we have American Sign Language, so we are adding year four. We currently only have three years. So that's aligned to our Spanish and our French offerings. And then in topics and social studies at Normandy, um, we have a specific course, um, that a teacher is, um, going to present, um, that relates to COVID and how the market has changed. Uh, so I'm really excited about those two changes as well.
Thank you very much.
I do have a quick I have a quick question about, um, the, I don't think my video is working. It went out, and my microphone wasn't working on my computer either, so you could just bear with me. Um,
You're good.
The 10th graders this year are class of 2023, which are the first to be impacted by the seals and stuff. And so are they going to get the part, are they going to get additional stuff? How you said, you know, they get it in eighth grade, then they get it again in 10th. Is that going to be part of this year? Are those students going to be able to participate in that?
Yeah, so it, that's a great question. Uh, that was not part of the presentation, but it's a 10th grade course, but we will open it up to 11th graders next year, um, so that we get that cohort. In addition, at registration time, all of our guidance counselors are sitting down, um, you know, obviously in a Google Meet if they can face-to-face, um, but going through that graduation plan and the seal components as well.
Thank you. Are those seals attached to diplomas, or are they on some other sort of, uh, certificate?
The seals, um, yes, they will be affixed to our, um, high school transcripts. And there, there are specific sticker now, um, from ODE that is placed on the transcripts.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nice job, Tiffany.
Thank you.
Before we, uh, before we just conclude my, my part of it, I just want to thank Tiffany first. Um, you know, the, the work itself and the products are, are phenomenal, and I think that not a lot of, uh, attention sometimes is given to the incredible offerings we have here in, in the Parma City Schools. And anytime we can sort of, you know, just open the window a little bit into what types of, of programming we, we, we have for our students, I think, I think it owes us to do so, and certainly these additions only bolster, you know, an already very oppressive, impressive, uh, array of, of, of offerings. But secondly, I just want to thank Mrs. Stropko for the, the way she approaches the work. Uh, you know, as she said, it's a collaborative effort, and without the structures that she has in place to collaborate with counselors and with teachers, you know, these ideas don't necessarily come forward. They come forward because there's a, a trust level and a consistent, you know, meeting structure, and, and, you know, our folks in the buildings understand that Tiffany and her team listen to them, and Tiffany and, and her team understand that the folks in the buildings listen to them, and it's that type of, of healthy organization where you can have improvement. So very grateful for the, for the product, but also for the process, uh, that, that got us to this point.
Thank you.
We'll turn it over to Board Member Communications, Mr. Schweitzer.
Thank you very much. Um, uh, Mrs. Carpus, anything for board members?
The only thing I have is if anyone was unable to tune in earlier today, uh, we, the board, um, the administration dedicated the boardroom to Mrs. Karen Dendorfer, um, to let kind of honor, um, the work that she did as a board member for all these years, and we had a very nice meeting, and two of her daughters are present. Um, and it was just really nice to commemorate her in that way, and, you know, her years of dedication to the district. So that's the only thing we have.
Well, thank you very much, and even though I was there, obviously, this afternoon, I did re-watch it this afternoon, again, when I got home. Um, so very deserving to, uh, Karen. Thank you very much. Uh, Treasure, you have anything, Sean?
Yes, I just want to mention that our auditors are working on our, our financial audit. It's due December 31st. Unfortunately, they're not in the office, so everything is through email, but, um, still doing the 31st, and hopefully, everything goes well. I'll keep you apprised in the results of the audit.
Uh, thank you. Fingers crossed. I'm sure it'll be fine. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, do we have any amendments this evening, Sean?
We do not.
Okay, at this point, we open the meeting to the public to address the board on tonight's agenda items. Do we have any requests to be heard?
We do not.
Not. Okay. Um, then I move to adopt Resolution 2020-12-531, approval of the written record of proceedings from the November 19th, 2020 regular, and November 23rd, 24th, December 1st, and 3rd, special Board of Education meetings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2020-12-531. Any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Resolution 2020-12-531 has been approved. Business of the board. Mr. Nucio, do we have our 2021 organizational meeting scheduled?
We do. It's scheduled for January 7th at 6 o'clock through Zoom and Facebook Live.
All right, right, on 6 o'clock through Zoom. Uh, because of the January 7th meeting is to organize for 2021, we need to appoint one of our members to serve as our president pro temp, uh, to open the meeting until we can elect officers. Uh, we do not need to vote, just agree by consensus. Uh, and do we have a volunteer?
I volunteer. I was gonna say, I volunteer Amanda Carpus.
Thanks, Steve.
You're so welcome.
Okay. I believe we have a consensus on that, so Amanda Carpus it is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, now move to curriculum with Mr. Vaughn.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. Uh, I move to adopt Resolution 2020-12-532, approve our overnight out-of-state field trips.
Second. We have a motion and a second for 2020-12-532. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I think if I'm not mistaken, this is just in case they're able to go.
Right. I believe this, I, from what I remember, I believe this is the Normandy band trip.
Yeah, that's right.
And, you know, we have to put it in because we don't know what life is going to be like, uh, at the end of this school year. Uh, and I, and I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that there is, uh, part of this, uh, resolution that, uh, if things continue the way they are now, that the trip obviously would not take place.
Yeah.
It reads right on the resolution that
Yeah, it's right there on the
we're gonna make up the effort to get refunds if necessary. We also, uh, scheduling it in such a way that there is some give time, we can move it back. Obviously, we want our students to have this opportunity, so we appreciate your consent.
Yeah, and, and we have to put it through because
Right.
and we're all hopeful, uh, you know, that things will improve, but as long as we have, you know, the built-in, uh, kind of safety net, then we're all good.
Yeah, very good. I just wanted to clarify it.
No problem. Um, any other questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2020-12-532 has been approved.
Very good. I move to adopt Resolution 2020-12-533, approval of 2021-2022 High School Course Guide.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for 2020-12-533. Any questions or comments?
No.
Mr. Nucio. Oh, did we have one?
No.
Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2020-12-533 has been approved. I think that's it, Steve, though.
I'm sorry, yeah, unless anyone else has any, I was like, I'm done. Uh, unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes for this evening. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Business, Mr. Kreis.
Yes, I'd like to make a move to it, uh, to adopt Resolution 2020-12-534, authorizing the sale at public auction of real property owned by the city of, by the Parma City School District Board of Education and no longer needed for school purposes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for 2020-12-534. Any questions or comments from the board other than it being a tongue twister?
Yeah, can we give some kind of context to this for the public?
Yeah, I, I wanted to, to be able to do that. If, if, sorry, Mr. Schweitzer.
No problem.
Yeah, importantly, um, you know, this is a pretty, uh, centrally-located, uh, parcel, obviously on a, on a main road, which tends to attract some information or some, some interest from, uh, you know, commercial, uh, real estate firms, uh, and, and, and corporations, and uh, we have, uh, you know, received inquiries. It was important to us to make sure that we talked to both the OFCC and GPD, the architectural group that we've been working with, because what we've said all along is that we don't want to pred Because what we've said all along is that we don't want to predetermine our elementary sites, really until we would get to a point where we're building new elementary schools. We, we have said that we want to preserve our properties. And so this is a slight deviation from that statement. But I want to be very clear that GPD and the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, both do not believe that the state road property is conducive to an elementary school of what we had projected of approximately 650 students in our elementaries, as we looked at a six elementary configuration. So it is only with their blessing and really their strong recommendation being that that is too small of a property, that we would go ahead and move forward with a sale if you approve this. And I'm grateful for the opportunity to clarify it because I think it's important that, you know, we, we continue to emphasize, we have not made decisions about where elementaries could go and what parcels, you know, we want to retain. This specifically though, is too small for future construction of an elementary.
Thank you. That's, that's very clear. And I know that the public needs to hear that. And I appreciate, you know, your explanation because we are far from determining where elementaries are going to be built. But if we've already know that one site is too small for any, then we can move on that. And I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Mr. Schweitzer, also that this resolution does not bind the board to accept any bids at the auction. It just says we have to advertise and have an auction, but the board can decide to accept any of the bids or reject all the bids.
That's good information, Mr. Nucio. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes, 2020-12-534 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes business for tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kreis, but we're not done with you yet. Yours is finance.
All right, back, back to me. I, I'd like to move to adopt resolution 2020-12-535, approval of 403B plan update.
We have a motion in a second for 2020-12-535. Sean, what's the update? I mean, I've known about 403B plans forever and has something changed?
No, because so there, there was some changes, I should say, in the CARES Act that affect these plans. But every six years, we have to update our 403B and the 457 plan, which is the next resolution.
Okay.
We hired a CPA firm that specializes in updating these plans. And they came back with the plans after discussions with them over the phone and through Zoom that this will be the plan we offer to our employees.
All right. Any other questions?
Nope.
Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes, resolution 2020-12-535 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2020-12-536, approval of 457 plan update.
Second.
A motion second for 2020-12-536. And the explanation for this is the same as the previous one, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes, 2020-12-536 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2020-12-537, requesting advanced payment of funds from the county treasurer.
Second.
Motion second for 2020-12-537, questions or comments?
Hey Sean, can you explain how this is different from the previous? We kind of had a history prior to you of borrowing money in advance. And I know this reads similarly, but that we're not actually robbing Peter to pay Paul here, that this is something different?
Correct. This, this resolution sounds a lot worse than it really is. All it is, is saying that usually tax bills are due in January. I always pay my tax bill in December. And so a lot of people do pay their tax bill early. This saying that the people that, anybody that county collects in January or next calendar year, they're going to forward to us in January and the money they collect up to February, they're gonna give it to us in February instead of holding all the money until March. So we're not, we're not going a fiscal year ahead of borrowing money. We're just saying the money we've already collected for the property taxes for this year, give it to us instead of holding and getting interest on it.
Show me the money.
Yeah, let us get the interest.
Right, very little we get.
Any other questions? All right, Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes, 2020-12-538 has been approved.
That was 537.
Oh, 53, I'm sorry. Resolution 2020-12-537 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2020-12-538, acceptance of the November 2020 financial report.
Okay.
And motion second for 2020-12-538, questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes, 2020-12-538 has been approved.
I'd like to make a move, a motion to adopt resolution 2020-12-539, ratification of investments.
Second.
Motion second for 2020-12-539, questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes, 2020-12-539 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2020-12-540, approval of supplemental appropriations.
Second.
A motion second for 2020-12-540, any questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes, 2020-12-540 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2020-12-541, acceptance of contributions and donations.
Second.
A motion second for 2020-12-541, questions or comments, Steve?
Yep, absolutely. I want to thank these fine people for donating and thinking of Parma City School District at this time. And I'm seeing that it's some COVID rated hand sanitizer, which is I'm sure will be useful and some other things. So that's, that's great. Thank you for remembering the Parma City School District.
And ditto, I, I agree, the donated 100 cases, as he said, that, that's great. I'm looking at one that's also a $5,000 donation to Valley Forge Athletics. Thank you very much. That's a, that's a nice piece of change. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes, 2020-12-541 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes finance for this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kreis. Legislation this evening, Mrs. Carpus, anything?
I just wanted to update. I know there's been a lot of talk and articles and media coverage about the fair funding that moved through the House relatively, with relatively large amounts of bipartisan support. Unfortunately, coming out of most, not most, but the majority party, the senators from the state of Ohio, their offices are saying that it's pretty much a nonstarter with them right now. We've had some really great communication with Senator Dolan in regards to this. And he has really given us his assurance that he will, while he has some apprehension about it right now, he does want to see this happen in the budget next year. He's not alone in that feeling, but he did give us his word. He will ensure that we have accurate and adequate statistically valid surveys and data sets in terms of, and studies in terms of what it actually costs to educate a child. And he says that those should be done by the end of March. So after the holidays, that's just a short 90 day period. And while I'm grateful for his, his word on that, we will definitely have to hold, you know, the legislators' feet to the fire to make sure that that happens because the fair funding in short would remove the financial burden of the voucher program and the charter school cost off the backs of the public education systems and put it back on the state and the legislators who decided that that was a good idea. So they will have to fund, you know, their own initiatives that they started versus passing the buck on to us. So that's it for legislation today.
Well, that, and that's very important, as you said, I mean, finally, at least it looks like we may be on the brink of some kind of overhaul of the school funding system that, you know, has been kind of neglected for decades at this particular point. So thank you very much.
No problem. It's, I mean, it's important to note that this is not ideal. We still have, you know, a long way to go in terms of what's equitable. And obviously, public education is largely in part funded by local taxpayers. And, you know, what one district can raise versus another based on the, you know, affluent community members and, you know, their socioeconomic status is completely different. So that's something that we'll have to kind of tackle after. But this is a great start to making us, you know, this would move, go a long way towards moving us and other districts, you know, closer to fiscal solvency for extended periods of time without those burdens, so.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Carpus, but we're right back to you with your resources.
All right, I move to adopt resolution 2020-12-542, approval of the following certified exhibits. Confirmation of stipend amounts, confirmation of substitute teacher appointments, approval of certified non-compensated leaves of absence, approval of certified long-term leave of absence in accordance with the provisions of ORC 3309.41, and confirmation of supplemental appointments.
Second.
And we have a motion second for 2020-12-542, questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes, 2020-12-542 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2020-12-543, approval of the following classified exhibits. Confirmation of classified appointments slash replacements. Confirmation of change of classified assignments. Confirmation of classified resignations. Approval of classified non-compensated leaves of absence.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion second for 2020-12-543, questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes, 2020-12-543 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2020-12-544, acceptance of classified retirements.
Second.
We have a motion second for 2020-12-544, questions or comments from the board? Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes, 2020-12-544 has been approved.
And unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes human resources for the evening.
Thank you very much, but you're a very popular lady today, Mrs. Carpus. On to you with policies.
Yes, this is the first reading of revised policy 1520, employment of administrators. First reading of revised policy 1530, evaluation of principals and other administrators. And first reading of a new policy, 2266, which is the nondiscrimination on the basis of sex and education or activities. All of these are Neola recommendations and wording, and our administrators have done a fine job getting everything ready to go to first reading in the last policy meeting. So that's all we got.
Thank you very much. Any other information this evening requested by board members? Okay. Two page slippers. Do we have anything that needs to be read into the? Not this evening? Okay, then we're at the end here. I move to adopt resolution 2020-12-546 to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
A motion second for 2020-12-546, questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Thank you. 2020-12-546 has been approved. This meeting is adjourned.